Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Norek.
Here.
Mr. Robke.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Serman.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair's here as well. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. Good evening, Mr. Culling.
Good evening. Could you start the roll?
We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider our recommendations, will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on October 9th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than the simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to an absence, there are only six members present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to three will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is October 17th. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say I do. Thank you. We are going to make a quick change in the agenda. I'm going to make an assumption, case 2018 Z44, 1515 Sheridan Road. Are you guys here? All right, we're going to move them to the front and have them go first, and then we will move through the order that is on the agenda. So, Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case?
Our first case is 2018 Z44, 1515 Sheridan Road. This is a request for a special use for dwellings above a ground floor to permit the conversion of office space into three residential dwelling units apartments.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Scott Miller. My personal residence is at 1524 Galenco Avenue in Highland Park. I'm here on behalf of RPAI Retail Properties of America to request a special use to convert office space to three apartment units in Plaza Del Lago. So, to orient you, we're specifically talking about the building labeled here as Lot 3 with the red cross hatch. That building currently has retail on the grade level, and above it are 14 apartment units, three of which had been converted to the old Moss Realty family office. We'd like to convert those back to residential use, and I have plans for the demo and can kind of show you what the thought is. This gray area here is currently the Moss Realty office, and we would like to demise that into one, two, and three separate apartments. Just to hit the high points as far as this relates to the village master plan, I believe the comprehensive plan currently notes 25 units in that space. We're asking to go from 14 to 18, so we're well within the cap of 25. We also believe this is in accord with kind of the mixed-use character of the property as it is. We're going from residential to a little bit more residential. As we reported and have worked with the, with village staff, you know, we are well within our parking ratio for the, all the various uses at the center currently, retail, restaurant, medical office, and residential. I've got a graph here, a spreadsheet here that talks about parking. With the conversion, we'll have still a surplus of 15 parking spaces. And again, we believe that once the building is fully renovated and these apartments are, you know, modernized and leased up, we'll, we'll be within the character of the, of the development, and this will just add more to the vibrancy of the, of the property.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. Are these, the parking spaces for the apartments, are they designated specific spaces?
No, they are not.
So, the retail customers as well as the occupiers of the rental apartments can park anywhere?
Yes, we don't have any segregated parking or designated parking within the property, nor am I aware of, there ever have been any.
I just had one question. I was just curious, are you going to have just office off-site then?
We currently are using one of the vacant real, one of the vacant spaces that was, I believe, occupied previously by the Chamber of Commerce in the old Arcade Building as a property management office. Now, we don't have full-time staff at the site as of today. We're, we're rotating people through. For example, I'm there usually one day a week now. We have a property manager that's there one day a week. We have an asset manager that's there. So, we won't be having, let me, let me say it this way. I hope we lease it all up and we don't have room for a property management office, but ultimately, I think when this, when we lease everything, you know, we intend to have a, we intend to have a continuing presence on the property, whether that's a resident manager who maybe takes one of the apartments at some point, but we don't have a plan for a long-term designated office.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? All right. It's pretty clear. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the case? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the case and ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make a motion here. Mr. Serman, thank you very much. Mr. Miller, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for dwellings above ground floor permit, to permit the conversion of an office space into three residential unit apartments at 1515 Sheridan Road. In accordance with the plan submitted, the zoning board will have the use run with the use.
Correct, yeah. All right, do you want to have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robke. Mr. Serman, your motion?
I think it's very straightforward since it's a conversion back to what it was initially, and there's an excess of parking. I don't see a problem with it and can support it.
Mr. Robke?
No issues. Support it.
Yeah. Anybody else? No. Yeah, I thought this met all the standards of review as well, and so it was a pretty easy one, which is why it got bumped to the front. You're welcome. All right, let's take a quick vote.
Mr. Serman?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
Yes.
Mr. Culling?
Yes.
Ms. Norek?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So, that's going to go as a positive recommendation of the Village Board. Meeting's on October 9th. I suggest you come, but you'll probably only be here for like 15 or 20 minutes again because it'll go on their consent agenda, and they just take one vote for everything that they're approving, and it always happens within the first 10 or 15 minutes of the meeting, so. If I could have you come up and just sign one of these letters acknowledging some dates in your presence, and you can take the other one with you? Thank you again for coming.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations on your new purchase. All right, do you have someone that make the recommendation to Chairman for, move to authorize Chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2018 Z44?
So, I move.
So seconded.
So seconded. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
As well. Ms. Roberts, when you're ready, we'll call the next case.
Our next case is 2018 Z43, 214 Fifth Street. This is a request for a 2.25-foot detached garage height variation to permit the retention of an expanded dormer on a detached garage.
Hello, welcome. Good evening. My name is Mike Leonardson. This is my son Travis.
Hello, Travis.
We just moved here from Virginia, from McLean, from the Washington DC area, and we're here to request a variance with respect to our garage. I guess a couple of key points. It's been suggested to me that I provided a lot of detail, so I won't go through all of it, but the real key point is, you know, there was a, a very significant, in my opinion, condition on the property that we bought, and it was that I would be able to install a car lift in the garage. And so, prior to purchasing this property, I had a garage stall, a garage door installer come and inspect the property. I had a contractor come and inspect the property. Everyone told me that this would be able to be done within the garage without having to change the roof line at all. We spent a number of months, as I kind of went through in the letter, with various contractors, various designers, various architects trying to work out the plans, and we ended up having the plans permitted by the village a few weeks before our move, so at, at early June. And one week before construction was to begin, the garage door installer kind of backed out and said, "We can't do it anymore," right? He talked to his engineering department apparently very late in the process, and they said they simply couldn't do a garage door that would go up and then at a 45-degree angle, and again at another 45-degree angle. So, I worked with my contractor and with the designer slash architect to come up with plans. They presented me with two options. One option, they said, was a simple change request that could be done and shown to the inspector when the inspector arrived. The other option was one that would require some major renovation to the roof and would require re-permitting and therefore another delay of four weeks. So, following the advice of the contractor and the architect, I told them to go ahead with option A, and when the inspector came, the inspector did not agree with my architect in terms of the nature of, of the change. So, I, I will put this on the screen real quick. What we are talking about here is this dormer. So, this was the original roof line. There was an original dormer here, a smaller dormer. I had included pictures with the packet, so I won't go through those again. And essentially, this dormer ended up being at the back of the dormer approximately one foot above ordinance. I will, it's probably irrelevant, but I wasn't aware of the ordinance. I was living in Virginia at the time, trying to coordinate this project from out of state, relying on what I considered to be very well-paid professionals to understand village ordinance. I think it's important to understand that I very much appreciate rules and ordinance. I'm an audit partner with Ernst &amp; Young, and I believe in following the rules, and so this is, was absolutely not any kind of blazing disregard for the rules, or what I know some people do is, you know, rather beg for forgiveness than ask for permission. Absolutely not the case here. I made every effort to do this right. I've spent about $25,000 thus far on the construction project, and from my understanding, having now understood the ordinances, is that I would have to completely remove the roof of the garage and everything that's been done thus far. I'd have to lower the peak of the garage to 15 feet and extend a dormer out the front and back of the garage, and it would probably cost me about $20,000 more. So, I, if you'd like, I can go through the, the reasons for which I believe it, it meets the-
Yeah, we've read them.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to slow it down here. Does anybody have some, any questions on this?
I have a question.
Yes.
You are doing all of this because you wanted the lift-
Yes.
-for the car. Is there a hardship that requires that you have that lift?
The hardship would not be requiring the lift, although that was a requirement of purchasing the property in the first place, again, for which I relied on professionals to tell me it could be done. So, the hardship, the hardship simply relates to the fact that if this were denied by the board, I would have no choice, in my opinion, other than to spend $20,000 to redo it. And to do it that way, I think it would make the garage look much more industrial. I would do it. That, to me, it would not be an option not to have the lift, and so I would do it, but it would result in an industrial-looking garage that, in my opinion, doesn't match the, the nature of the house, the characteristics of the house, and all of my surrounding neighbors have said they sure hope that doesn't happen.
So, the lift is what, so you can put, add, put more cars in the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
Good answer.
Is it a what, for two, two-car lift or one-car lift?
It's a one-car lift, so it's a two-car garage, and only on one side I have a lift, so to put a third car.
And you submitted the drawings to the village, correct, with the internal-
Correct, yeah.
Internal modifications?
That was-
And then it was, when the external ones came-
Correct.
You, you didn't re-permit for that?
I was advised-
The architects said-
Correct. I was advised that that was a simple change order that could simply be done and shown to the inspector when the rough inspection is done.
Could you walk me through? I'm, I'm maybe a little bit confused. I, I see the, if you look at the two photographs you sent, one before and one after.
Yes.
Trying to get to that.
So, on the screen, this is the before shot.
Before, yes.
Right? And so, where that dormer sits, now wider dormer sits, which is one foot higher than the old dormer. So, what we did was we extended the, the width of the dormer to the, to the width of the garage door, so that there could be supports going straight up to the roof, and what that does is it allows the garage door to go straight up to the 12 feet and over, and that eliminated this need to have a 45-degree and another 45-degree angle in the door.
So, the variation, just let me just, there's a variation involves the change in the height of the dormer?
That is what caused the variation, but I've been advised that the variation is now, not that the dormer is too high, because there is an allowance for a dormer to be that high, but only if the roof is 15 feet or less. The peak of the roof is 15 feet or less.
So, so let me hit the, if I can understand this correctly.
Yeah, it took me a while.
The, the existing top of the roof of the garage is 17 feet.
Correct.
Which with the previous dormer was permitted.
Correct.
Because it was lower.
The previous dormer was 12 feet.
Lower.
Yeah.
But now that the new dormer is what, 14 something?
13 feet. 13 feet.
One foot higher. Now, the roof, the maximum roof height has to be 15.
Correct. So, my options would be get that dormer back down to 12 feet, or bring the pitch of the roof down to 15 feet.
Lisa, can you give us a little rationale for that?
The different peak heights in dormers and why that's-
Is there any explanation we have?
Sure. So, the height of, the height of accessory structures, including garages, used to be 15 feet, and several years ago, we made some changes, and it was changed again in 2014 to allow a higher roof pitch up to 18 feet, but the wall height was then capped, and that's the, currently nine-foot four is the cap. And the idea was that the additional height that would be allowed in the ordinance was solely to have a roof pitch that was greater than what you typically see, to provide some architectural character and allow garages to match the home better than they might otherwise. Part of that discussion was limiting exterior roof projections like dormers, because the intention was to, again, have height on the roof. It was not necessarily to make that a usable space except for storage, and dormers potentially do add an appearance of bulk to the structure. And so, again, it was, it was, it was a place to draw the line so that that roof height was, was doing what it was supposed to do and not necessarily causing other issues.
I think I got it.
So, the bottom line is, the roof line is staying the same as it is today?
Correct.
You had to raise it a foot in order to get the door to slide up the way you needed to slide up if you put in the lift?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the lift is driving-
Right.
Yeah, the variance request.
The height of the dormer.
So, then, so then the, the dormer is just one, on the exterior is one foot higher than it should be?
Correct.
Right.
Just a funky one, because, yeah, I don't know. I forget, that's discussion. Are there any more questions for our applicant?
I guess the other thing is the height, Lisa, you said would be a maximum wall height of nine foot four, correct?
Correct.
This wall, is that part considered the wall height as well?
It is, right, yeah.
Because it integrated the dormer?
Yeah, yeah.
Because dormer call, comes all the way out to the front wall now, where it didn't before.
It's not a dormer. In, in the architectural sense, it's not a dormer. It's a tall wall with a complex roof.
Yep.
A dormer is engaged in the roof and comes out from the roof. There's no roof in front of it, therefore, it's not a dormer.
Any other questions for our applicant? No. All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? I'd seen no one. Do we have everything that you've submitted? That you, is there anything you'd like to add? Yes, young man?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
He's not sworn.
Please. I don't think that's fair.
Yeah. It worked on a treehouse before.
Oh, really? Oh, then do it again. I guess the only thing I, I will add is, again, the hardship is not having the, the car lift. I know a car lift is not required and does not in and of itself make a hardship. It, it's simply the fact that I will have a car lift, and it's only a question of whether I have to tear off my roof and extend dormers out the front and back to accommodate, lower the roof line, again, not match the house, and I think I and my neighbors have a pretty clear view on our, certainly our preference. And I would only just also point out, I did spend what I think is premium dollars to make sure that we're matching all of the materials of the original house, we're matching the design of the original house. The dormer is, is and will be trimmed out in the same way as the dormers of the house in order to kind of maintain that aesthetic for the neighborhood.
So, let me ask you this. If, if you didn't have the lift, you have three cars, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. So, where, where would you have to put the third car?
I would have to rent a space.
Or park it on the street?
No, it wouldn't get parked on the street.
The third car is a special car.
Okay. A different car could get parked on the street.
Right. Or you do the garage, I mean, or you do the roof line change, yeah. But, you know, keep in mind that we make a recommendation to the Village Board. Village Board has final say on this.
Mm-hmm.
So, even if you get a negative recommendation from us, you can take it to them, present your case again to them, and they can overturn our, our vote if we are negative. All right, I'm not, so we're not the end-all, be-all. What we are here to do is, A, bring all the facts to the surface, and B, apply those facts and the circumstances to our zoning code. So, we more strictly enforce the zoning code than the Village Board does. So, like, we, as an example, we didn't, used to have an ordinance for treehouses. So, we, every time a treehouse request came, we had to say no, you know, and we had little pleading innocent, yes.
And then they said-
And then they would overturn us and, you know, and then finally, when they rewrote the zoning code, they incorporated an ordinance for treehouses, and now we don't see them anymore, so. It's just-
So, I, I just have a question about the process.
Yes.
Please forgive me.
Yeah, absolutely.
I hope this is not out of line.
No.
What, I guess I heard initially when I met with the village-
Yeah.
-that the village was not able to, the people I worked with in the village were not able to approve a variance.
Correct.
Right? That they could only strictly apply code.
Yes.
And so, my understanding was that was what this board could do, is understand what the variance was, whether there would be a hardship of, of strict adherence of the code, which there certainly will be. I consider $20,000 a hardship.
Well, but the, you gotta understand what a hardship is. A hardship is not how it inconveniences you. A hardship is the uniqueness of your property or a characteristic of the home, you know, maybe it's, you're adding an addition and you're already over a side yard setback, and you want to put an addition that's, so, all right, that's a unique feature to the property that then we see some gray area in. A hardship in, you know, where, oh, I've got, you know, there's not enough room in my garage for, you know, all my stuff and my cars, is that a hardship? You know, in some cases, you know, because of other circumstances, you know, there's not enough room someplace for the cars, yeah, okay, but to spend money to, it's, you see the difference, how we have to look at a hardship as to what you're looking at a hardship as?
I see the difference, but I guess I would just ask the board to consider-
Yeah, absolutely.
-that we are where we are, I am where I am today.
Yes.
Despite my best efforts coordinating this from out of state, hiring what I felt were qualified individuals, and so the, the position I'm in today is strict adherence of the code will cost me $20,000, and I consider $20,000 to be a personal hardship.
Yes.
It's what I would be forced to do, right?
Yes.
In my opinion. And I would just ask the board to consider, we're not talking about taking up more ground, we're not talking about inconveniencing our neighbors, it's simply one foot of airspace above, you know, where the dormer limit is. I understood that this ordinance came to be as a mass issue, because the issue was if you're going up to 17 feet or 18 feet with your roof point, to have dormers extended at that degree was the, the, what was attempted to be avoided was individuals trying to gain mass, right? Trying to have a lot more in the garage. I'm not trying to have a lot more in my garage, it's, it's literally one foot over that section.
Right, but in a way you are, because you're having to create space for this lift, which throws you into this category. So, in a way, you are creating more mass. Now, is, is the appearance of mass going to make a difference? You know, these are parts of the, the, I'm, I'm, the standards. Thank you, Patrick. The standards that we go through, you know, is this impairing light and air, is this, you know, changing the character of the neighborhood? But the, the key one that most people have a hard time matching is the difficulty or hardship resulting from the application of the zoning ordinance would prevent the owner from making a reasonable use of the property. However, the fact, however, the fact that the property could be utilized more profitably with the variation than without the variation is not considered as grounds for granting a variation. So, that's the hardship rule, that, that's the one standard that is, is sometimes hung up, you know. We'll look at, we'll look at an odd-shaped lot. Well, that, that tends to be a hardship for somebody in certain circumstances. So where we may, you know, I, I think I'm leading you in what I'm thinking, I'm not speaking for the whole board. But where we may say, you know, this isn't a hardship, and where it may end up getting a negative recommendation, the village board can say, no, this is, you know, it's really not that big of a deal, it's not impacting things, we're going to let it go, and overturn our vote. Okay? That's the procedure. And they're really the end-all, be-all. And like I was saying, we bring the facts to the surface, we apply things to the standards and make a recommendation, and they can overturn us if they want to. They can, if we're positive, they can pull it off the consent agenda and turn it back to us as well, so.
And just one last question. Is the hardship measured from where we are now, or are you measuring the hardship from before? Before I hired these professionals?
So here's, this case because...
Kind of like the mistake of the professionals.
No, and usually when we deal with cases where something has been done completely or partially, and then they've gotten caught up by an inspection or something, and they come to us, sometimes there's deceit involved, you know, I just didn't want to do it, I didn't want anybody to know. And we fully understand that you've tried, you've gone above and beyond to try and make this work. I forgot the point I was going to make.
We have the ability to let it work.
Yeah. Well, we have the ability to make a recommendation.
Yes.
Yes, you know, and, I mean, they could turn it over the other way, too, you know. So...
We look at it as if it hadn't been done.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Lisa. So in a case where, in a case where things have already been completed or partially completed, we've been told, we've been given direction that we have to look at this as if nothing has been done, and this is the original request. So if you hadn't done any of the work and you came to us with this application, would we approve it?
That answers my question.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it took me too long to get there, and I thank you, Lisa, for swinging me back onto the line. All right, do we have any other comments or questions from the board? No. Yep? Okay right now? No?
No, but that's okay.
A little nervous, I understand. All right, I'm going to close the case and ask if there's a board member who would like to... Okay, Mr. Robke's motion, do I have a second? All right, Mr. Coling, a second. You guys can have a seat while we go through this part.
Regard to case 2018Z43, move to recommend granting a request for 2.25 detached garage height variation to permit the retention of expanded dormer on a detached garage at 214 Fifth Street in accordance with the plans submitted. I think the chairman's already brought up the issues with this, but I, I add one more. I mean, I don't see any hardship, but I also think this is the wrong variation request. I don't think this is a dormer, I think this is a wall that exceeds the height that's allowed for the wall, and it's a semantic or a technicality for how it's approached. Having said that, I looked at the property, when I first looked at the garage, I'm like, what's the problem here? It's, it's setback, it's, it's innocuous, but it's also beyond the jurisdiction, unfortunately. Unlike many zoning boards in other jurisdictions, we have an advisory to advise if it meets these certain criteria, and in my opinion, it doesn't meet the hardship criteria. I'd love to see the village board give us real authority to make zoning decisions as an appeal board, but that's not our role. But otherwise, I just emphasize, I think this is a height of wall issue, not a dormer. A dormer is fully captured by the roof. This is just a much taller wall.
Thank you.
I can't support it for those reasons.
Mr. Coling?
Well, first of all, while we are an advisory board, we have approved variations routinely in the eight to nine years I've been on the board, and so I, I don't know when our, everything's kind of shrunk down to where we're just interpreting things. We also have approved variations, many of them significantly more liberal than what you're asking for here. Basically, the roof height doesn't change, it's a one-foot dormer increase. Basically, we've approved two car, two-car garages going to three-car garages. You probably don't have the space for that here, but that's something we've done in other instances to accommodate a situation where you have three cars. It doesn't always happen, but it has happened. Obviously, the lift is what's requiring the change. I assume the third car is something that needs to be housed. If you only had a two-car garage and you weren't going to rebuild it or rent the space, you'd have to put your third, not the car that's probably going on the lift, but one of the other cars on the street, there's not a lot of street parking around there, I think that may create a hardship for you. And the change that you're looking, it's implement here, I mean, as Mr. Robke said, he went and looked at the garage and he said, what's the problem? You look at it, you don't see a problem, it's a technical problem of a foot, and I don't, I mean, I think it's a de minimis request, and we've often granted requests, I mean, not on this specific situation, but de minimis requests. And so I can support this, and I think it could beat the standards of review.
Mr. Sherman?
I guess the way I look at it is, there was an existing garage that they had to deal with. Now, if, if they were building a new garage, they could have maybe made it deeper, which then would not have forced a dormer of that, well, or a structure of that size, if they were able to get a little bit more depth in the garage itself. So they could have come to us, you know, if it was a, a new, a new garage that they were building, and he'd say, well, maybe I need two more feet, and then I can maintain that dormer. But since the garage was built in 2013, it's new, and that structure that's built out there really is only about three feet vertically and three feet horizontally. So it really, I mean, it's, really is a small area, and I think for the one foot of a static, you're talking about whatever the length is, one foot times...
Twenty feet, eighteen, twenty feet.
Not even fifteen feet, or whatever it is, eighteen feet. I mean, it's a small, it's a really small request. And I think since he said that he's, has the support of the neighbors, and I believe he's done his due diligence when it comes to the whole process of going through it, hiring the architect, getting three bids, dealing with that, and, and being out of state. So I, I think first of all, it's just a small request.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, feel free.
Yeah, everybody keep, what is the height of the wall of the garage that's allowed?
Nine foot...
Nine foot four.
And from my perspective, what's the height of this wall? Because this is an uninterrupted wall, there's no roof line coming through, it's not a dormer. So is it four?
Can I, can I follow up with that, Mr. Robke? On the issue of, if you look at the first, the original drawings of the garage, of the early garage...
Of the first garage, or the...
The first garage, which is the first plan.
Which page are you on?
Well, there's no page, unfortunately, here.
Oh, I got you. It would be like 1.5-ish.
Yeah, which shows sort of the, the smaller. If you look down on that, follow the vertical line from the edge of the dormer down to the edge of the wall, it is the same thing. It is, it follows the front of the garage wall directly.
Right, it's straight. I mean, the, we keep saying a dormer, but the garage door exceeds above the roof line. So the garage door must be part of the dormer, too, by your definition of a dormer.
No, no, I, I'm just saying is that, that the, in the existing garage, or before they remodeled it, the front of the dormer, edge of the dormer front, is in line with the front of the wall of the garage.
But it's engaged in the roof. That's what makes it a dormer.
No, no, well, maybe we're talking semantics, but if you then look at 1.9 and 1.8, the photographs, what they're doing in 1.8 is they're just covering the overhang with, with roof, with asphalt singles. They could have done the same thing in 1.9, and covered the overhang with asphalt singles.
No, they couldn't have, because the garage door is taller. The garage door extends into the roof area.
And the garage door is a foot taller.
Which is why I say that's a big wall, not a dormer.
Taller. The garage door is a panel taller, if you look at the two pictures.
I mean, it's semantics, and either way, I wouldn't be surprised and would probably support if the trustees were to approve this.
Anyway, that's neither here nor where, whether it's a dormer or not, but my point is, this applicant did this with the best of intentions. He did not do this to deceive anyone. And because of the circumstances of where he was living and trying to do this long distance, and the assurances he received all the way down the line, it turned out to be, at the end of the day, a not compliant, in relatively insignificant manner, in my opinion, with the code. And there was no bad intent here, there was no intent to deceive, it just, because, and sometimes we encounter these things where things happen, and so I...
You can blame architects a lot, too.
He's an architect.
If this, I think this warrants, warrants...
Relief.
Relief, yes.
Right, just... I just want to keep, you know, our directive on cases like this, or if this came before us without any work being done, would we have approved it?
Yeah. That was, that was the one thing that I, I don't know if I said in my previous statement, if he had come to us with this request, I think we, or I would have spent time on it and said, you know, is there any way to get rid of that extra panel door? Can we shove the dormer back a little bit? But in the end, I think I would have approved it because it is so minimal.
Okay. What do you think?
I, too, think it's a de minimis request, and it's not even visible from the street, and it's, they were working with an existing garage, and I think if it had come to us, I, too, would have, would have agreed to this variance.
Yeah. All right, I, I have to agree, I think, you know, the amount of effort you put into this, the stress I'm sure you've been through and are going through, and, you know, your intent is obvious. And we deal with a lot of people who are trying to skirt around the rules. I, but in looking at this as an application, if it hadn't been started already, I would have struggled with the hardship, well, like Mr. Robke is having an issue. I think that it is not impactful on the neighborhood, it blends in, I think you've done a great job with all that. I, you know, I, I said to Lisa before the meeting, we have two cases tonight where Maple is involved, you know, you're just off of Maple on Fifth, and we've got a case at 1500 Maple. So I was looking for the corner house, and I drove up and down the block, and I didn't notice your issue until I noticed the sign on, posted, the notice on your tree, and then I looked to the back, I'm like, oh, that's the lift case. So it's, it's absolutely unobtrusive, it's really not causing any change, but there's no hardship. So that's, I'm, I'm, that's where I'm kind of hung up on this. So I think unless there's any other comments, we should take a vote.
Mr. Robke?
No.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norek?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Duppy?
Chairs are going to vote no. This is going to go as a positive recommendation of the village board. Meeting's October ninth. It's going to be on the consent agenda unless someone pulls it off. I don't see anybody pulling it off. I suggest you come. Like I stated to the last applicant, it'll probably be done in fifteen or twenty minutes for your part, and then you can go home. And you can bring your son, and he can plead again if, you know, if he has to. All right? If I could have you come up and sign one of these and take the other one with you?
Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2018Z43.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well.
And that one's for you.
All right, you guys have a good night. Thanks very much. You're very welcome. See you. Welcome to Wilmatt.
Our next case is 2018Z42, 1500 Maple. We have a revised request, which is for a variation to permit a parking space in a side yard adjoining a street to permit the widening of the existing driveway. And there is a memo at your places that discusses the change.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. I am Carolyn Sennett from 1500 Maple Avenue in Wilmatt. I brought with me Tony Di Tomaso from Wilson Lawn. He actually submitted our permit for us, and will be doing the work if, if it's granted at some point, the variation. So we're requesting a variation to permit a parking space in our side yard adjoining a street to permit the widening of our existing driveway, which is in the side yard. So...
It'll pop up in a second.
So this is our house, this is the garage, the driveway, the existing driveway, and I think this is an instance where the village code was written for Wilmatt houses that do not share the same characteristics as our house, and that is, we have an attached garage, which is actually unusual in our neighborhood, and we are on a corner. And as we are on a corner with an attached garage, it is in the side yard, and our driveway is also in our side yard. We would like to widen the driveway to about here, so that we can pull a car in and just park it right here.
So do you, do you not have room in your garage?
We do not have room in our garage for a third car.
So you, you've got three cars?
We have three cars.
You thought about a lift.
Look, there's a bedroom on top of the garage, so, so the lift would go right into somebody's bedroom. That would actually be nice, that was an interesting...
It's one of the best ones ever, I think.
All right, you can go.
So, so we would like the ability to pull...
You're dismissed, good job.
Sorry. To pull this third car off the street. Both 15th Street and Maple Street restrict parking to only one side of the street during snow and lift pickup, there's no parking on the street at all. Our proposal is to remove the existing asphalt driveway rather than repaving it with asphalt and replacing it with a paver driveway that would be wider to accommodate the car. The total square foot of impervious surface we would be adding is 111 square feet. We had a revision to this, so we don't have any issues with coverage of impervious surface. It's just the fact that it's going to be a parking space on the side of our house as opposed to in the back. The code is written prohibits the side yard. The only way for us to put a parking space on our property would be to put it in our backyard, and there is plenty of room for that. However, it's not workable in this instance. First of all, we don't have access to the alley from our house. We would also have to build a path to the back, to the parking pad, and this was in your packet. So this would be an alternative, that we would keep the driveway the same. There's a path that goes to a patio, there's a deck, there's stairs that come off. We would have to put a parking pad right here, and doing so would cause several problems. Number one, as I said, we would have to build a path back there, and in doing so, we would be adding a total of 360-something square feet of impervious surface to our property. So, side yard would be 111 square feet added, back pad would be 360-something, because we'd have to put both the path and the pad so that we could get back there. Also, the area that we would be able to do this would require taking down several mature trees. That doesn't even go to the top of them. I actually took a photo, this is, this is from the alley, I just did this today. The idea, this is our fence right here. So all of these trees would have to be chopped down in order to put a parking pad in the back. Also, because we are proposing to do this with pavers, it would be environmentally better rather than what would likely be something like a concrete parking pad in the back, and it's going to look nicer.
So on your application, there's no dimensions. So I understand that you had a computer calculation in this, what are the dimensions? What's the depth from the sidewalk to the house? What width are you adding?
Can you have a...
And I apologize for not having the dimension on that, it'd be my responsibility, but the side yard setback is 25 feet, so that, that, if I put this on here, so that's this dotted line that you see along here, this is the side yard definition, this line here and here. So it's 25 feet from this line to the, there.
So the house is basically...
The house is just like 25 and a point, 25 eight from the sidewalk, I believe. I think there's eight inches there.
So we, basically, you get about 25 feet in depth, and then what's the additional width that's being added?
At the property line, I have to be 18 feet to meet code. So I'm 18 feet exactly at this dotted line with this setback line, I'm 18 feet wide. So I just bump out, just a... So I just bump out just a little bit to get to that 20 feet that the garage is here, and then that's just an additional, and I.
It's eight feet, six inches.
Eight feet, yeah, eight feet, six inches. Correct.
So eight feet, six inches by about?
13 feet, maybe?
13?
Yeah, yeah. It's just enough to fit a car. I tried to make it as minimal as possible to get a car in there. And, and allow her to still be able to back out of these garage spots without. Currently what happens is they have a car here, and they try to get around. They have to move cars, you know, so I try to give enough room that she can get out and still swing around it, just enough to get out.
Yeah, we have the same issue at my house.
Yeah.
We just got a third car this summer.
Call me. I'll design it for you.
All right, there's no room.
If it is eight foot, six wide, 13 feet doesn't make sense in the, for length, for that additional parking spot.
I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have, I'm going off of memory. I'm.
Because you couldn't fit a car in the 13 feet.
I, I'm, again, maybe it's 18. I just, I did put dimensions on it, so. Do I have it here?
But, but the addition, as you say, is 111.
It's a, what I've done here, I've actually, here, this line, and the current driveway, this whole edge here is a little wider than it needs to be. So I sucked it in a little bit, and I've extended the walkway to get to the edge to gain more room over here, because I'm trying to stay under the permeable. So I shaved a little bit off this edge to gain it over here. So.
It's going to be fun putting a, putting a car in there.
Yeah, I'm trying to make it as good as possible without going over. The goal is not to go over the impermeable.
Now, that, that, as it does now, will drain into the storm, the street.
Correct.
Have you thought about doing permeable pavers? Have you considered that at all with your client?
Yeah, I, I was here about a month ago for another, like, another client, and we've talked about the permeable pavers and how much additional, you know, permeability it is. And it's such a minimal amount that, you know, I didn't propose it, but again, we haven't even picked this.
From your experience, you're an expert in this area, I assume, about. There are no permeable pavers that really are, do any meaningful.
I mean, according to the manufacturer, it's, you know, it's a, it's, and I can't remember the percentage, but it's, you know, maybe 20, 20% more, you know, permeable.
Absorbent.
Yeah, and so at this point, we haven't even picked a paver. We're trying to get permission to even do it before we even pick a paver yet, so.
Have you seen what the library did?
Here?
Yes.
No, I have not.
Okay.
I'd also like to point out that right now it's asphalt, so simply by replacing it with pavers.
No, I understand, I understand. I'm just always trying to encourage people, even though, I understand, and you may be able to correct me also. I understand that the lawn, grass absorbs only 30% in the rain, of the rainfall.
I, I don't know that answer.
You know?
I'll defer to that.
So 20% would be, would be almost equivalent to having grass there, right? If that's what.
I, I think what I'm saying is 20% more than a regular paver, not necessarily.
Oh, I see. Are they, are they much more expensive?
They're considerably more expensive, but not prohibitively more expensive.
I keep, this is my favorite subject, and so whenever there's an opportunity to, to reduce runoff.
Yes.
I'd like to encourage people to do so, but it's obviously not required.
And also, too, if you look, the runoff is probably not going to go into the street. It's going to go into the parkway before it goes into the street, because there is grass right there next to it and all around it.
Okay, so. I guess, so there are no dimensions, because when I scale it with the scale that's on the drawing, you know, it's about 20 feet. And I think you said that it was 13 feet.
I, I, and I just went out of my head.
You know, we can't approve stuff where there's no dimensions.
Well, it's almost the length.
I can add the dimensions. I can go to my car and get a.
There's another one that has a scale on it. It's right here.
Is there one with dimension?
No. No, this is the scale.
I guess.
I mean, I can.
I think 20 feet sounds more reasonable.
I guess, I haven't, well, I guess if you could explain what the hardship is of having another space, there are plenty of homes in Wilmatt that have new homes that go up that sell for, you know, a million and a half dollars. They have two garage spots, and they have two spots in the driveway, and that's all that's allowed. And even that second spot sometimes kind of cut off, so.
A lot of those people do have an ability, though, to put a parking pad in their backyard. They have, their garages are off of an alley, and there are spaces, and so there's, they're popping up all around me.
I mean, the two cases I'm looking at, my next-door neighbor and the neighbor across the street both have brand new homes.
So for example, I actually included a few, just examples within a block of my house. So, so this house actually has an ability to park in the front lawn. I don't know what the circumstances were that led to that, but that's the front of the house. That's about four houses down from me. This house is kitty-corner to mine. They did some renovations. I think the front door used to be over here. It's now here. They basically have an ability to park two cars right there, in addition to having a detached garage.
Do you have, from what I looked at, you have the ability to park two cars currently, right?
Inside the garage?
No, no, on the driveway.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Here's, this is actually my next-door neighbor. So he has a one-car garage, but he's able to park a car if he has a guest. He's got some sort of impromptu parking space right there. And then there's a house.
But I guess the thing I see, I don't see is.
Garage.
And maybe the other members can help me. I mean, the house that you showed that just had two parking spots.
Yep. It has a two-car garage.
Which is exactly what you have.
No, it has a detached two-car garage, so that's, those two, those two cars are leading up to their house. That's not their garage. That's their house.
They're not parked in front of the garage.
There used to be a garage.
That's what she would have, two cars parked in front of a garage, as opposed to, so it'd look just like this.
Yeah, but that's not even a garage. That's just their house.
But that, but you would have two cars in your driveway.
I would have two cars in the driveway.
As it stands right now.
Yeah, exactly, when they're not on the street. Also, if we really feel the need, we're going to have another, we're going to be creating a hardship for ourselves in the fact that the back, I mean, the back would work. It would just be expensive. We'd lose a bunch of trees, and it would be, it would probably flood the alley.
What Mr. Sermon was getting at is, you know, hardship being, as I explained in the last case, you know, a uniqueness. And, you know, having a third car is, is not a hardship that we can, you know, use to justify a request like this. So I guess, you know, it's a challenge, and you've proven that there isn't an impervious surface issue, which is a, which is a pretty high bar that we kind of try and stick to. So we're just really dealing with a, a parking space in the side yard. And how many, I mean, you know, when I drove the neighborhood, and I assume, there's only this one instance that there's parking in the side yard, that picture that you showed us. Everybody else has the opportunity to be in the back, because of the alleys, and you're choosing not to do that because of the trees and somebody's antenna.
Yeah, there's the antenna. That's why we wouldn't put it in the other space. We think, we keep trying to put more trees there, so we don't have to look at it, but.
We have several, we've had several cases where there was an alley, and they were on a corner lot. And they took our garage, the alley, and then they wanted to put a pad.
Yep.
Toward the street.
Yep.
And that violates something, right?
Yeah.
But we've seen many instances where they're in the middle of the block. They have a two-car garage, and they had a parking pad. And we have not raised any, many.
But that's off the alley, right?
I got that. I got that.
The one was, if they would have put it up, if they would have put it out the other side of the garage, there was trees that we needed to come down, so they, they were able to be on the street side. I mean, and I think we approved it that way.
The one I remember that's similar to Mr. Schneider's description was east of the tracks, and they had poured the pad, and Village came out and said, well, you can't connect the pad to the alley. They had a two-car garage. They poured a pad, and they, and they never did connect it to the alley. What they ended up doing was just pour a bunch of stone between the pad and the alley, so it wasn't considered a parking pad.
But even a case like that, you've got, you've got space for three vehicles.
Four in that case, but yeah.
Oh, was it, what, a two-car garage and a pad, right?
Plus two, yeah.
Oh, two pads?
Yeah. Well, it was one big pad, and it was a corner house.
Oh, yeah, but they were going to use.
That was the issue, is it wasn't, it was, the pads were joined to the street.
Right. So this one is, I, I think this one is a little more similar to what we, the case we had in West Wilmatt a few meetings ago, where the gentleman wanted to expand his driveway to the width of his garage, and it was a short driveway. And, but I think where we came up with a hardship there was that his, huh, the drive, the garage of his property was, you know.
It tapered down.
And it, and it was like 18 feet from the sidewalk. So it was, and everybody else's houses were set much farther back. They didn't have an alley. They didn't have, you know, and people were parking in their driveways, like everybody does, but we gave him like, I think we gave him like four feet or six feet on one side of the driveway, but not on both sides. Or that was our recommendation, at least. We didn't give.
Well, he changed his request, as I remember.
Right. He, he reduced his request, right. All right, do we have any other questions for the applicant? No other questions. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Seeing no one, we have everything from you?
I hope so.
Okay. I'm going to close the case and ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
I'm moving case number 2018-Z42. Move to recommend granting a request for a, there's no impervious surface. I should change the, I got it here. Recommend granting a revised request for a variation to permit a parking space in a side yard adjoining a street to permit the widening of the existing driveway at 1500 Maple Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted. And attached to this revised is a plan, which I think is on a larger scale, but is identical to what was in our original packet.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robke.
Always here kind of reading what was the original intent of the constitution here. I think what the zoning code wanted to avoid by, by providing for this limitation on side yards adjoining a street is to, I think, is to avoid having automobiles parked so visibly adjacent to a street, unlike if it were off an alley or if it were a deep driveway to the back of a lot from the front of the street. I can understand that. I think in this case, what you see is typically cars will park, will not go into the garage, but will park on the, on the apron many times. And given also somewhat limiting factors of where you can park on the adjacent streets, and that this does not, this complies with the impervious surface coverage limitations, it's fairly de minimis. I can, I can support it.
Mr. Robke?
I'm still on the fence. I'm anxious to hear what everybody else has to say. As most of you know, I'm not a fan of cars in front of houses. It's been pointed out, they've got four parking spaces, two in the garage, two in front already. I do understand there's some limitations on the street with parking there, which is why I'm on the fence. If there was easier parking, I wouldn't be, so I'm anxious to hear what everybody else has to say.
I too am on the fence, because they do have an option, because they do have alley access.
Yes.
Which makes, you know, that's what it's for. That's what that alley's for.
In that, especially in that neighborhood, yeah.
But that would be a trade-off with additional impervious surface that that would require, but anyway.
It would.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessitate a variance for that. They'd be well within their, their allowable.
Mr. Sermon, any comments?
You know, you'd mentioned that, that other property in West Wilmatt where I think the applicant wanted to go to 20 feet or 21 feet, and I just scaled this, and it looks like it's about 21 feet wide for the whole area. You know, there's space for two cars there.
Mean existing.
Existing. And, you know, there is alley access. I, I guess I don't see the hardship when you've already got the equivalent of four parking spaces. That's where I have the difficulty.
Mr. Coling?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, it's just because of the way the lot is situated on the corner there, that it, it becomes an issue. You know, when, when I saw this originally, I thought, well, no way. And then, you know, you got rid of the impervious surface, and now, so now it's just the parking pad. Some of the pictures, some of your pictures are compelling, though. There are, you know, other circumstances in the neighborhood, so this really would not change anything in the neighborhood. You already have a bunch of these side yard and front yard parking. There is an option in the back, so it does raise questions. Is it really a hardship? I understand taking down trees and this and that. But I guess I, I'd come down probably that, Mr. Schneider, I, I think I can support this, so.
Hey, can I make one last comment? I guess I look at it, I see, you know, how many places, except for alleys, do you have three cars lined up? You know, if they're not utilizing their garage, there could easily be three cars lined up there. And I think that's what the code is trying to avoid, a grouping of three cars. People can see two, but three in width, to me, just seems excessive, and I think that's probably why the code is written the way it is.
Yeah, I was, you know, when I read through this, and it was pointed out, the, the parking issue, the street parking issue, so as I approached the, the house, and I started driving around the neighborhood, and it seems like the, the, the parking restrictions are trying to deter people that are using public transportation. And, and then the, then the real issue is about cars in the street when it snows. So then, I'm like, okay, so I've, I've got, I've got a little challenge for, for street parking, so I gotta, I gotta take that off the plate as a, as a reason why. And then, so then I started looking at the property, and, and, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of room to create a parking pad in the back. It's not going to affect impervious surface. It would be an inconvenience, is the way that I kind of saw it with, because the complaint is, oh, I'm going to take down these trees. Well, there's a couple pine trees and shrubs, and like, there, there's no, you know, oaks and maples and cedars and, you know, it's, so then it becomes, okay, what does it do if she's got a, if they have a parking pad in the back? Well, now they're looking at the house across the alley. So is, is that a hardship, right? And then I, it came, and I looked, okay, well, now, if I'm just looking at the parking pad in the front, what, what is this creating? And all it's, what it's creating, to me, is more parking, and, you know, that's right up by the sidewalk. And I believe that it's, it's, that we shouldn't have that, period. I know that people grant, get it granted, like if they move a garage from the front to the back, they want to keep a spot in the front. I usually vote no on those. It's not something that I, I'm, you know, in favor of. But, so I, I just, I found trouble saying that this was a reasonable solution to your issue. I understand that it's probably the least impactful to your lot, you know, and to your wallet. You know, you're cutting down some trees, you're, you're doing additional work, you know, through the backyard and then the parking pad, but this just. But this just seemed the most convenient solution, so is that
Can I add something? I know that they would not, if, if they put the parking pad off the alley, they would not and have a pathway to it from the house. They would not conflict with the impervious surface regulations, but they would, it would increase impervious surface.
Yes.
And that in of itself is, 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 is a factor. And the other thing is, you know, I'm just saying, if they flip this, this garage and this parking pad to the alley, there'd be no problem. Right?
Flip it to the alley, so if that was all on the alley?
Yeah.
Yeah, there would be no issue, because it's on the alley as opposed to being on the street.
Well, now-
But they'd lose the two spots of the driveway.
Right, the driveway's providing two parking spaces.
So I'm saying, if, if this, they redid this house, didn't have the garage off the, off the side, but added in the alley, they could have a pad in the alley and the two-car garage in the alley, correct?
Yeah, but currently, they have a two-car garage and the equivalent, their request is equivalent of three pads.
No, they're not.
Because it's, it's five spaces, one, two, three, four, five. So.
And if it was on the alley, there would be no parking between the alley and the garage?
No, wait, slow down, guys. If I may just explain. If you had a garage-
Yes.
With a long driveway in the back of your house. Okay?
Okay, so a driveway off of the alley to the garage?
No, 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 from the street, from the street to the back of the lot.
Yes.
You could have a hundred-foot driveway.
Yes.
You could theoretically-
Hey, I thought you meant the alley entering the garage from the back.
Five tandem spaces. You don't count the number of spaces that could sit on your driveway. Because you'd have, and what, that's what you're counting here, are tandem spaces. Because if you have, if you have two cars in the garage, two cars in the driveway, you have to move one car out of the way to get to the other car, right?
So is that a hardship or a inconvenience?
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think-
Yeah, I thought, I thought you meant entering from the alley. That's why I came up with those thoughts. I just, the, the thing that I have an issue with is having three cars in a row right there. We don't see situations like that where there are other three cars adjoining a sidewalk anywhere in the village that I know of.
Right, and, you know, to Mr. Sermon's point, you know, that a couple meetings ago, that one case we had, it didn't allow for three cars. It just created width for a car to get around his car parked in the driveway.
But I do understand your point from entering from the front.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm dealing with your issue, with, with your description right now. We've got a third car, I've got a detached garage all the way at the back, and we have to, one car has to get around the car parked, or we have to jacky cars. And it's an inconvenience.
Or, or you, or they park on the street?
Or, and we, yes, on, yes.
Which is not a great solution.
But we, you know, we manage.
No, no, I, I got it. They will manage. Whatever we decide, they will manage. No question about it.
All right, any other comments on this? No more. Ms. Norick? No more comments? Okay. All right, everybody's gonna, all right, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
No.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
No.
Mr. Sermon?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes no also. So yeah, goes a negative recommendation of Village Board. So Village Board's meeting on October ninth. My suggestion is you bring this in and present it to them, and let them, you know, overturn us. And they may give you more direction than we have, so.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
If I had put in for a comment for a side yard patio or a walkway, would that have a totally different view or something? Would that have been an issue?
Could she have put a patio next to her driveway, in the side yard setback?
A patio is allowed in the side yard as long as it's not more than ten percent of the coverage in the yard. So potentially, you could do it, if you didn't have the parking pad, because of course, you're, you're right at the coverage limit right now.
I just redid my driveway and said I'd like to put a patio.
You could do that, but you couldn't park on it, because then we'd call it a parking space. Probably what we would say is, it needs to be disconnected from the driveway, like a three-foot setback or something like that.
Right, which is what happened in that case that I brought up that was in East Wilmette, where they built a pad for two cars, and the way they got caught up in it was they were doing alley work, they were doing some sewer lines in the alley, and then they had to come to us for a request to connect it to the alley, and we said no, and the Village Board agreed. And so what they've done, they just poured stone for that two or three feet separation, and they still park on it. You know, they didn't even faint putting up the basketball hoop, they just so. Are there ways around it? Yes. Do we approve that kind of stuff, or no? But some things- Yeah. Okay. Can I have you come up and sign one of these for me? And then please, on October ninth, I mean, I would suggest you represent to them, and let them, you know, overturn us.
Got it. Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-Z-42.
Do I have a second? Second? All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. All right, that was the last case of the evening. I'm kidding.
Our next case is 2018-Z-45, 935 Oakwood Avenue. This is a request for a 22.77 square foot total floor area variation, a 1.71-foot rear yard garage setback variation, and a 0.21-foot rear yard garage eve setback variation to permit the construction of a new detached two-car garage. And you have at your place is a modified pair of elevations.
All right, thank you. Welcome. I hope we haven't made you too nervous.
No, we're good. Thank you. Thank you, Board, for having us. It's lovely being the, the last one this evening. We're getting a little blurry-eyed, I'm sure you are as well. Anyway, we are here. My name is April Seesready. This is my husband, John.
I'm the one who's in the begging.
Like the little boy.
You're gonna give us that candy look. Couple of candy bars, he might chill back up.
Uh, we're there, we live at 935 Oakwood. We're the residents there. We're here tonight to request three variances, so that we can build a new garage. Our current situation is that our existing garage, which is twenty-deep by sixteen-wide, is, uh, gotta be from, thank you, yes, you saw it. It's gotta be from the fifties. It's leaning, because there was a very large old growth tree that was taken down, and it, you know, had pushed it over. We're now to the point where, you know, the garage door doesn't go up all the way. We're really on the last leg of getting it, hence the reason why we need a new garage. We're wanting to replace our existing sixteen-foot wide garage and our existing parking pad with a new garage of twenty-two feet wide. The depth will be the same that we currently have now. The variances that we need are a 0.34% total floor area variation that will allow us to build a twenty-deep by twenty-two-wide garage. We need a 1.71-foot rear yard garage setback variation. And then, because of that request, we need an eve setback variation. We make the request for the rear yard garage setback in order to keep our existing setback that we currently have now. Our lot is a non-standard size lot of 149 by 44. The house takes up the majority of that lot space, leaving us very little green space in our backyard. We don't wanna push the garage further into the backyard for loss of green space, as well as a beautiful tree that's smack dab in the middle of our backyard. We lost two other old growth trees on our property that provided a lot of great shade, and we don't wanna do anything to potentially harm this, this one that's in our backyard. So I, um, by, by building this new garage, we're shifting it a bit to the west, which will actually add one foot of green space. We're shifting it actually to the east, which will add one foot of green space to the west into our, of our backyard. So with that, we respectfully ask for your approval for these three variances.
So I, I have a quick question for you. So your house, was it remodeled? I mean, what, how are, so-
No, the exterior of the house is-
Okay, so, so my question really is about, so your maximum and allowable floor area is thirty-four, thirty-eight, ninety-nine, right? And you've got this three-hundred-and-sixty-nine square foot garage. And how, by going, you know, to the max garage, so are they already exceeding?
Yes, yes, the current house and garage are non-conforming in floor area.
Did, did we get there because the, the code changed, or was the house, was there an addition, or, I mean, do you-
I'm sorry, I did not research that.
No idea, okay.
Yeah.
I, I think, I, I thought that it was just because our lot was, what, ten feet less deep, right, than a standard lot. And at some point, if you saw, I say, you've seen our house, right? You guys can all see it. Our neighbor is right next to us. And I, I think at some point that we seeded, or the lot seeded ten feet over to the neighbor, and they built that house.
In width? In width, yes.
Yeah, in width. So.
All right, so I thought the house next door to you was identical to yours. Is that two doors over to?
No, no, it's much smaller.
Yeah.
All right.
And back in the time that our neighbor's house was built, ten feet in width was, you know, gifted to that property. So I think that's why ours is only forty-four feet wide.
Yeah, the neighbor's house is actually, their lot is thinner than yours to the east, yeah.
Yeah.
So, hm, and your house is larger than theirs. It looks like, at least according to this sandboard. It's, all right, so really, y- y- you know, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we ended up being over in FAR, which is, you know, one of the bigger variances that we look at here, because that's about density and bulk on, on the lot. And so maybe you got caught up in a code change or something, yeah, that's, that's best we can figure, all right.
Yeah, because what we can tell, too, by looking at real estate, real estate things of our house, I mean, nineteen-fifties, the house looked the same as it does today. I mean, it's a nineteen-twenties-ish house, and there's nothing on it that believes, leads me to believe that it's been, you know, added on, so I don't know.
Yeah. All right, and then, what, your proposal is just to put the garage basically in the same place that this one is, except expanding to the east, and you're pulling out the parking pad, right?
Yeah, yes.
And, and so one of your, your variances is about it being setback from the alley, and it's only because you're trying to maintain the same location.
Right.
Except making it wider.
The yard that we have, the same.
What, what is the minimum requirement? Three feet, right?
Three, right, and they're one point seven.
What is the hardship for not doing three feet?
It's, we already have a really small yard, and this'll make our yard ludicrously small.
And we don't wanna lose the-
By eighteen inches?
By eighteen inches, I believe, or twenty inches. And we also don't want to impact the tree that's in the backyard.
Where is the tree exactly?
The tree is in the backyard, in the middle of the backyard.
Where, where is it located?
It's right in the middle of the-
It's in between the deck and the garage.
Right in the middle of the backyard.
Okay, I mean, I, go ahead, thank you.
See, I, I understand that, you know, the reason that three feet is there is for, I imagine, a couple of reasons. One is to, when they pour your new garage, they're not gonna pour it promptly at the height it is now. So they're gonna pour it taller, so that the ramp going in is gonna be at a different height.
Right.
And, you know, you have that setback for snow, for trucks driving by. But I understand the concern about the, the tree in the small yard, but but there is a reason more than just aesthetics that the, the village has at three feet.
Right.
Also, just turning in and out of the-
Yeah.
Yeah, we've lived there now almost eight or nine years, and there's been no alley access issues with trucks, or turning into the garage, or anything like that.
Any other questions for our applicant?
Have you considered a lift?
Very reasonably priced, yeah.
I have to go third car.
Yeah.
Are we gonna ask this for every garage?
So the request really is just the the twenty-two point seven seven square feet.
No, and the, and the, the setback.
Oh, and the setback, yeah.
Right, setback, and then the eve created, yeah. All right, any other questions for our applicant?
So your garage company didn't express any concerns with being closer to the lot line than the three feet? You know, spoke of sort of this pad being a little higher and sort of having to ramp up.
One of the things that you note, I mean, I, when I drove into the alley after seeing the angle of the garage, you don't notice that it's any closer than any of the other garages. You know, e- e- even standing, you know, next to the garage, trying to look down the alley, there's no, it's hard to discern, you know, okay, so maybe a little, there's a little bit, but it's not, you know, it's not an aesthetic issue, so.
No, it'd just be when they poured the concrete.
I get it.
This, you know, it's gonna be this steep instead of out to air. I just wanted to make them aware of that.
Well, I think maybe that's something that we can talk to the garage people about, because I certainly don't need to go up a huge ramp to get in. In fact, you may have noticed that our lot is raised significantly from our neighbor, and our neighbor has been sort of graciously living with that fact that the side of our yard is being held up by these concrete, concrete things that are, you know, so I'm almost wanting to ask the garage people to not raise my garage higher than my yard, because we may eventually want to correct that concrete thing and make our yard a little bit lower. So that is something that I had thought about talking to the garage people about. I don't want my garage super high.
One more question. Have you, has an arborist advised you that the tree would be in terminal danger if you moved it eighteen inches further?
No.
No, we did not hire an arborist to get that recommendation.
Any other questions? Young man, you wanna speak either for a question? All right, well, I'm gonna have to ask you to come up, and you guys have, you know, step back, give him some room, and need you to introduce yourself.
Mark Foight, I live on 219 Ninth Street. So, you know, we all, all the neighbors on Ninth, we all share the same alley. It's a T alley. It goes down and go to the north, and then T's to Tenth Street or Ninth Street.
Yep.
So there's their red garage versus the neighbor's garage. And our main concern is safety. This is Tenth Street, right there. And unfortunately, AT&T just put a huge fiber optic box right there. As you can see, their trashcans are always in the alley. And this is a sidewalk right here that kids walk to school on. It's such a blind spot, there's huge trees right here blocking the telephone pole as well. But their garage is definitely, this garage is here, the next neighbor's garage is way back here. So our main concern, me and several neighbors, obviously, I'm the one that volunteered to come, is the setback. We want them to build a new garage. We wanna be good neighbors. It's the 1.71 rear yard setback. We understand they have a tree. It's in the middle of the backyard, halfway between the garage and the house. I mean, I don't know why pushing it two feet into their yard. We understand it's a 150 by 44 yard, it's over the standard 200 or 175 on the south side of Oakwood. But that's our main concern, and this is the second concern. Like, this is Monday night. This is how they park their car. This is during the rainstorm. Usually, it's on the centerline of the alley. It's right there. I mean, I have to, I mean, literally, they probably see it. I put their mirror in the drive-by of their car. And like, here's the bushes of the neighbors. So we have a car parked there and a thing parked there. We can't even get around their car. And I'm sure the new garage, this is why we fully support the new garage, we just want it setback off the alley. You know, it's just, that's why I sat here for an hour and twenty minutes to come in. It's not, it's not the new garage. We know they need a new garage. I don't think they even get a car in the garage. It's really hard for them to get a car next to the garage on the parking pad. I don't know if that's like eight feet wide. It's really skinny to the east. The main issue is, I mean, during snow, that's how they park their car. There's no apron. Eliminating the apron does not solve the issue, and 'cause it's the last house on Tenth, our house actually faces Tenth, it doesn't face the Oakwood. It's just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to just keep it where it's at, unless they're trying to use the existing foundation and just rebuild the garage. But it's, my understanding is they're starting new. They're building a new foundation. So why not build it to the code, three feet? It gives them the opportunity to park maybe half- It gives them the opportunity to park maybe halfway off the alley? Like from here to here?
You know, it's, it's, it's 18 inches, so, I mean, you're-
They're not supposed to park there anyway.
Yeah.
But all the neighbors, all the neighbors do, it's just this is-
We'll have the opportunity.
This is one of the most difficult places to get by. Luckily, we can go to the east and get off at Ninth Street. That's, that's all I came here for. We fully support it and the setback, I don't know how the tree will die in the middle of that car, by keeping the three-foot setback.
Do you have any pictures of the tree?
I don't have my phone today, no. But it's, it's, I'm not an arborist, it could die, it could not die. I am, I'm a full believer, I mean, I totally, I'm probably, they think I'm a bad neighbor, but I just, it's a safety issue. Like, I, we come down 10th Street, we come down this way on our bikes, coming from the north, coming, coming this way, and literally, if there's a car coming this way, it's a complete blind corner. And I tell my kids to get off their bikes and walk across the alley. And so, just having, I don't know, I mean, it's just a tough, it's a tough situation for them, it's a small lot, their garage is falling over, we understand that. And hopefully, they'll put two cars in their garage, and this will never happen, but we know how that goes, you have people coming in for three-car variances of this, and parking pad variances, very few people in will-
What street parking light there?
Oakwood? There's another corner house across the street, west on 10th.
There's no limitations, right? There's no parking limitations?
There's zero limitations. On Oakwood in front, or on 10th. Granted, it's across 10th, it's on the west side of 10th. Their house is on the east side of 10th. So they would have to walk out their front porch, across the street to get to their car, which would most likely be facing south, not facing north.
So there are parking limitations, so.
There isn't, it's just they have to walk across the street. The limitation is-
It's not parking on two sides.
There's no limitations.
Not parking on two sides, okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, parking limitations, they can only park on the west side.
Right.
Obviously facing south. So, that was my comments for today.
All right, thanks.
Did you want me to stay, or come?
No, you can go.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Yep. All right, now, you have the opportunity, yeah.
Okay, so, yes, I think your name was John Voit, right? Anyway, respectfully to my neighbor that lives on Ninth Street down the, down the alley. I think that if a neighbor has a problem with the way I park my car in the alley, which I realize is not a designated parking spot, they can ring my doorbell and approach the safety issue with me, and you know what I would do? I am so sorry, I will never do it again. Right? That picture he took, I was parked there. It was parked there maybe 10 minutes as I ran inside, do something with my kids, to only move my car to go onto my next carpool. So, I'm an open book, if a neighbor has a problem with something I'm doing, tell me. I don't think an 18-inch further setback is going to make that corner any safer. There's trees right there, there's a telephone pole, there's my garbage cans, somebody ha, I mean, people have garbage cans in alleys going into streets.
Yep.
Any alleyway going into a street is a, a bad, a bad corner. Cars go fast there all the time, I consciously try to go slow in that alley, because I know there's kids, there's this, there's that. So, I think he could have rung my doorbell and said, this is a problem with you parking there. And during the winter, we won't be parking there. You know why? Because I will have a two-car garage, that my, both of my cars will fit there when it says, don't park on the street. So, those are my rebuttal comments to that.
Okay, that's, I can't, yeah. So, I'm gonna, I'm, is there any other questions for our applicant? No? Okay, as long as you've added everything, we're gonna close it.
Okay.
All right.
Close case, ask if somebody made a motion. Mr. Sermon, thank you very much.
If I can find it here, uh... Sorry? Is that the end of the whole? Oh, there it is, got it. I move to recommend granting a request for 22.77 square foot or a 0.34% total floor area variation, a 1.71 rear yard garage setback variation, and a 0.21 rear yard garage eve setback variation to permit the construction of a new detached two-car garage at 935 Oak Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Mr. Kaling. Mr. Sermon, your motion.
I think the square footage, since it's only 0.34, you know, a third of 1%, is a small request. The garage setback, I mean, I voiced my concern previously, and I think it's fine if they want to move it closer, I don't have an issue with it.
Move it closer where?
Closer to the alley, I mean, maintain their current location.
Yeah. All right.
So I can support it.
You feel it meets all the standards?
I think so, I mean, you want to have, you know, where, we try to get two-car garages everywhere in the village where we can, get another street, and prevent that type of situation, and I think for 22 square feet, it's a minimal request to accomplish that. Mr. Kaling?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I mean, this garage is screaming to be replaced, and needs to be replaced. I think the fact that you're, you're putting it in the same location, you know, if it wasn't there and you wanted to create more yard space for yourself, I'd say that would be an issue, but since it's already there, I, I think that's fine, and I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Yeah, Mr. Snyder?
No, I, I, I agree with the floor area variation, I have, I can't agree with, with this rear yard setback variation, I mean, the garage setback variation. Three feet is already relatively little, and we've heard about the safety issues. There's absolutely, in my opinion, no hardship to move it 18 or 19 inches and comply with the three-foot setback. It is, I doubt that the tree is in danger, in our previous case, we, we thought that a solution might be to tear down trees to put in a parking pad. So, I, I am, I am, there's just no hardship to not comply with the setback.
Okay. Mr. Robke?
I have to agree with regard to the setback. I think the comment was made, it's going back where the other one is, it's where it is, but the other one's gonna be gone, and then they're gonna be building a new one, because they're not reusing any of the foundation. If, if there was something salvageable to the foundation that would give us a reason to do it, but I, I, I'm troubled with the setback. Absolutely no issue with the, the FAR, the accessory structure is within, so it's the existing house, it's a-
Yeah.
A, a separate issue, we want the two-car garage. I think the three feet is, it does give a buffer as the car is coming out, you know, two or three, back to the neighbor's comments about the blind corner, there's nothing to stop them from putting a six-foot fence right on the property line there, which would block all of that, but you don't have a car coming out of that. So I, I feel the three feet is also required, I have difficulty supporting that.
Ms. Norick?
I don't have a problem with either request, I think it's minimal, and it's, it'd be in the existing location, so I could support it.
I guess, I have one question, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I had one question before you commented.
Feel free.
I'm sorry, were you?
Go ahead.
Okay. I don't live on an alley, when you live in an alley and you, your garbage can, so they, if you keep them in your garage, you put them out in front of your garage, or do you have people that typically have a, an area cut out for it?
Does anybody live on a-
People leave them out.
Yeah, just all the time.
I don't live on an alley, but most people leave them out.
So they wouldn't leave them in front of a garage?
No, but there's room, I mean, there's, you know, you can look at it this way, too, the- Yeah, there's room on the east side of the garage to put the garbage cans now?
Okay.
Because there isn't gonna be a parking pad there.
Okay.
I, I-
I guess I'm still on the fence, you know, because there is a three-foot, the code's there for a reason.
Yeah, but it's, the-
So.
I, I don't see people putting garbage cans in front of their garage.
No, no, I know.
So that three feet doesn't, so to me, the three feet didn't make a difference.
Yeah.
And, obviously, FAR, I, I feel it got caught up in the code somehow.
Lisa, do you know any reason why the three foot is there?
Not specifically, I mean, some separation visually and safety-wise and maintenance-wise.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I, I had no problem with this request, this was one that, in hindsight, I probably should have moved to the front of the list, and done second instead of fourth.
Remember, lifts are always at the end.
Next time.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh. All right, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Kaling?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.